Hi. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome to the Milton School Committee meeting of Wednesday, March 2, 2022. Hope you all had a great day. Our first order of business this evening is to adjourn to an executive session. We will be returning to open session after our executive session. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss negotiation strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the MEA Unit A if in an open meeting they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and if the chair declares so. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Member Rustini? Member Rosemarin?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
And Member Abahart, yes. All right, we will adjourn to executive session. We will return to open session after executive session is over. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. We just returned from executive session. We are calling the School Committee meeting of March 2, 2022, to order again. Our first business item is to approve this evening's agenda. Are there any changes, additions, subtractions?
I have a subtraction.
Yes, Member Rustini?
I need to postpone the Curriculum Instruction Advisory Committee update till the next meeting.
Okay, great. We'll add that to our next meeting. Member Rosemarin?
Yes, similarly, I reported on facilities last week, so last.
Yes, there was, there's no update after you're from the town person? Okay.
No.
We left it on there just in case.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, well, then I'll have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Yes?
So moved.
Okay, all right, we'll do a roll call vote to take attendance. Member Rustini?
Yes.
Member Rosemarin?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
And Member Abahart, yes. Okay, welcome, everyone. We will turn it over to Superintendent Chet.
Thank you, Chair Abahart. It sounds like it may be a light night. First on the agenda, under the superintendent's report, we have the Director of Mathematics K through 12 of Milton Public Schools, Mr. Brian Selig. He is here today to give a quick overview slash update of the math curriculum review that he and his team have been working on. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Selig, if he could unmute himself.
Thank you, Superintendent Chet. This is a just quick volume check. I didn't have a chance to do that. Can everybody hear me okay? Great. If it's okay, I'm gonna share my screen and just walk through a couple of slides that I've prepared to give a little context to the conversation. And I'm hoping you can see that slide right now. Comes up excellent. Okay. All right. So the curriculum review process that our Math Curriculum Council for Elementary, which formed in spring of 2020, has been following since, is consistent with the guidelines and recommendations for the selection of high-quality curriculum materials that DESI has provided for districts like ours who are undergoing a curriculum review. And so what you see here are the four phases of the process: the learn and prepare, investigate and select, launch, implement, and monitor. And I'll talk about each one briefly in just a moment. All of the resources and guidance that we've been following over the past almost two years now has been in partnership with DESI. We joined as a core team there, Selecting High Quality Materials Network, in the 2021 school year, which meant that myself and one representative from each of our four schools participated in team meetings throughout last school year, updating on our progress and learning more in-depth about each of these four phases. This year, we've sort of held on as kind of informal members. We're no longer attending those meetings because there would be redundancy in that this school year, but I remain active participant in their team leader meetings, which are every eight weeks or so. And then we've been able to take advantage of some sort of direct personalized consulting with one of the mass special, it's at DESI, to provide updates and seek counsel from them on each step of the process. So these links in the bottom of this slide essentially go into a little bit more depth, in one case, a lot more depth, on the nuances and details of each of these four phases. I figured including them as links would suffice. So when we talk about Phase One, Learn and Prepare, this is what our team engaged in starting in the spring or early summer of 2020 and carried right through sort of the end of last school year. That included establishing a curriculum council. I've included a link here for the list of participants among our four elementary buildings, the different roles that the members have. And we've had a little bit of change to our committee since the first year, which has been to just bolster up the part of the process that we're in the middle of right now, which I'll get into in just a moment. Again, you can see what some of the other suggestions for how the first phase of the curriculum review is conducted, making sure that all members of the curriculum council have a comfort level with the curriculum frameworks. We kind of bolstered that a little bit as well initially as a team by looking at a couple of specific resources that I felt would add some importance to our work around the role that high-quality instructional materials play, particularly in equity and in promoting anti-racist curriculum in mathematics. So I linked those in here as well. And then essentially, we focused our time and attention last year on identifying what the parameters for our decision would need to be to fit the specific needs of Milton Public Schools, develop a vision and corresponding priorities through which we would make our ultimate evaluation and selection recommendation. We have continued to consider stakeholder engagement throughout the process. I think tonight speaks to that a little bit as well, and understand what the options for elementary math curriculum core curriculum resources are. So this was a fairly modest set of tasks for us to complete last year, keeping in mind that we were really in the thick of the pandemic, and it was extremely challenging to bring the committee members together too often, considering all the other demands on their time. And we felt it prudent as a group that we spread our process out over last year and this, which I think in hindsight was definitely the right choice. It would have been, I think, really risky to rush our process and try to get all the way through an investigation and selection and implementation for this past fall, in light of all the other challenges we were experiencing as a school district leading into this year. So I think the members of our committee would agree that they're happy to see the process playing out over the timeline that it has, even though initially our ambition was to try to get it all wrapped up last year and able to put something new in place for this past fall. So we now are, since the fall, in the thick of our investigating and leading toward a selection recommendation. We were able to utilize some existing third-party review resources that you may or may not be familiar with. Ed Reports is the most well-known of those on the national scale, and Massachusetts has its own version called Curate. And we looked at any K-5 math core curriculum program that had been reviewed or rated by either or both of those panels, and that allowed us to narrow our choices. I think the risk of extending the presentation a little bit, it's probably worth seeing that instead of hearing me just talk about it. So here you see a breakdown of every curriculum that has been reviewed by Ed Reports as of this past fall, and the criterion that was used according to the three indicators and which met, which did not meet. And there was one because of its newness that had not yet been evaluated, but by virtue of the reputation and ratings that it had earned at the, pardon me, at the middle school and high school level, I felt important to keep in consideration at that time. And then we also looked at the Massachusetts version and the programs, which are not nearly as many that had been reviewed and rated at that time. And we settled on the ones that are highlighted here for our initial investigation, feeling confident that because these had satisfied all of the requirements or expectations, I should say, set forth by the independent review teams at Ed Reports and Curate, that we were, by narrowing it down to these four, guaranteed to end up with a well-aligned, rigorous elementary curriculum that reflected an important balance between conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, and real-world application. From there, we started in late November, early December, to investigate each of these four programs, first specifically through the lens of teaching and learning. And essentially, what I mean when I say that is by grade level and in grade-level groups, we, using a rubric with indicators, and I'll just give sort of an example of that, in case it's not convenient for you to, and certainly I know for our listening audience it's not. So one indicator, for example, in teaching and learning is implementing tasks that promote reasoning and problem-solving. That comes directly from our vision, and we feel that a high-quality curriculum should be one in which students will solve and discuss tasks that allow multiple entry points and varied solution strategies. So using samples of each of these four programs, our grade-level teams K to five evaluated on the basis of that indicator and others like it, and submitted ratings and comments just recently, as you can see within the past couple of weeks. We then used that, those results or responses to narrow our the programs that we're considering down a little bit further. Of the four, it was clear across the board from our K through five teams that three of them rated well by comparison to the fourth. And so it was decided very recently that we eliminate the illustrative mathematics through the LearnZillion platform from consideration, considering that it had not held up to the same high rating as the other three. And so now we move on to the next part of our investigation and evaluation in the areas of access and equity assessment and tools and technology. And so we now have new groups that are formed, some rubrics that are just about finalized. And over the next four to five weeks, we will be within these groups focusing on each of the five indicators that you see listed here, evaluating each of these three programs, and then combining the results from that with what we have already. And then the last part of our investigation, in lieu of piloting any of the materials in our own classrooms, is to solicit feedback from districts who are using these three programs currently and can offer us some insight into things that are hard to tell by looking at samples. What is the actual experience like in the classroom with these materials? What is the quality of professional development that was provided when this program was purchased by your district? What level of ongoing support is offered? How are, you know, essentially, a lot of the things that we would like to know about the program before we move forward and recommend that it be purchased for Milton Public School students. So this is all right now very much timely. And if I come back here to my slide deck, we anticipate having a final recommendation available to share with Central Office in early April, at which point we hope to be able to transition very quickly into Phase Three, which is launch. Once we have a program identified and we're ready to move forward, it's important that we get the materials in the hands of teachers before the end of this school year, ideally set up at least an initial training of some sort to familiarize them with the curriculum, keeping in mind that only a small percentage of our elementary teachers are participating in this process now. So for the vast majority of them, whatever program is selected will be brand-new, and in many ways different than the curriculum that they're used to teaching from now. And then you can see what some of the other aspects of the launch look like. And, you know, nothing's, I think, more important than getting off on the right foot with a new, with a new curriculum, especially when you're talking about math at the elementary level. So the launch kind of transitions, transitions us from the selection to the longer-term implementation and monitoring to make sure that we're adapting, adjusting, and monitoring what the effectiveness of the program that's now in place, starting in the fall, will be, and adjusting it as needed. So that's a, I hope, a sufficient sort of overview of what we've been engaged in. I'm very grateful to my team, who is giving up a lot of their time and effort and energy beyond what their already job responsibilities are. And it's probably worth saying that we got a lot of volunteers. We didn't have to turn anyone away, but it was not that we had to beg and plead either to get people who are willing to participate and engage in this work. So I feel, I think, very confident in the legitimacy of this process, in the balance of the lens through which we're looking at these different resources, because I know we're looking for a large investment, both in terms of cost and in terms of time and professional development, time, and it's a big commitment to make a transition of this magnitude in a core subject area at the elementary level, because it impacts so many teachers and students, and it's not one to be taken lightly. And it's not one to be, you know, done every year or two or three. So the idea is that we find something that will work well and suit us well, so we can invest in it over, you know, four, five, six-year period of time. So with that, it probably makes sense to stop sharing and answer any questions that you may have about this or anything else.
Dr. Carol?
Thank you so much, Brian. And not just for the presentation, but for leading such a rigorous process for this, seeking out our next elementary math curriculum. I have just a couple of questions and then a couple other points. One, I think I may have missed this, but could you clarify or just explain where the rubrics came from? Did your team develop the rubrics, or did they come from another source?
Yeah, that's a great question, Dr. Carol. So the language in our rubrics was not our own. It derived from, so the rubrics that we've used so far in our initial evaluation that I described sort of focused very much on teaching and learning it from our vision. In fact, our vision itself comes from the National Council of Teacher of Mathematics, abbreviated NCTMs, Publication Principles to Action. I forget the subtitle of it, but essentially, it was a transcendent publication in math education as far as transitioning from a sort of more traditional teacher-centered instruction to one that is student-centered and more conceptually rooted. And so much of our work to date has been rooted in that text. And then as we move on forward to the next phase, I guess probably the best way to put it is the current phase, again, we're not developing these rubrics from scratch. You'd have to jump through a few of the links that I included there, but eventually you'd land at some samples that also, by coincidence, were, that NCTM itself was involved in but did not come directly from that publication.
Okay, thank you so much. That's really helpful and great to know. Two real quick other questions. So when you mentioned the other districts that have implemented some of these different curriculums, and you're talking about the initial professional development and support for preparing to implement, to launch, is that included in the purchase price of the curriculum in the first place?
Yeah, the cost structure is slightly different from one company to another, but it's impossible to purchase a curriculum without some level of professional development. So it's just a matter of whether they build it into the cost. For example, one of the companies gives a baseline of professional development with the purchase of the materials, and then there are options to add on and customize the professional development as, you know, based on the needs of your specific district, where others, it's a separate line item. I'm going a little bit on memory there. I think it's fair to say that although it's not necessarily packaged with the materials themselves, there's not a quote that I've gotten yet that didn't include a line item for professional development in some fashion.
Okay.
And the option to customize it to your particular district's needs.
Great. So the last question I had was just because you mentioned the intention of selecting a curriculum that we invest in, you know, for that five-plus or so years. Can you remind us and the community as we talk about the need for this curriculum at this point in time? Like, when was the last time that we, when did we adopt our current elementary math curriculum? And just to help remind, make sure everyone understands that this is a necessary kind of transition that we've reached beyond the lifespan of the curriculum we have.
Yeah, and I'm gonna beg forgiveness, because I know this question arose that I think the last time I appeared, and I said that I would find that out, and I still am ashamed to say that I haven't. I know that we're talking in the neighborhood of 20-plus years in terms of some iteration of everyday math, and I'm seeing Margaret not along, and I don't know if Janet can add any more specifics to that, since this is just my third year in Milton. But I know everyday math is the only curriculum I've ever heard any elementary teacher that I've ever had a conversation with speak of.
Yep. Thank you. So my, I just want, like, a couple of quick final points.
Oh, Lizzie, I think Janet, sorry, I think Janet was gonna answer.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to add that while we have had Everyday Math for many, many years, we have updated to Everyday Math Four. And that may have been, may have been eight, eight to 10 years ago.
It was nine years ago, but maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, James.
So this is a good, you know, an overdue investment on our part as a district. So just for everybody to kind of know that.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Carol, but I think not only are we talking about a long period of time that's elapsed, but we're also talking about a significant amount of change that's come to math education, specifically at the elementary level. If we had a curriculum that we had adopted in 2014, I'd be making a case that we should try to dig up the money to replace it, just because in math years right now, even six or seven or eight is, feels quite outdated. So, and in fact, when we, when we look at our current Everyday Math, even the version that Assistant Superintendent Sheen referenced, it has not evaluated well in recent years by comparison to what else has come on the market in terms of its alignment and its.
Thanks. So this, when we're talking about striving for excellence for our students, this is a clear example of putting that into, into action. So, you know, making sure that our students are challenged and all of that. So I, as an elementary, early elementary school parent, I thank you very much for doing this work. My own children will benefit, I think, from this, and I'm very grateful. And to your whole team that's been spending all the time piloting it, the couple, only couple other things I wanted to highlight, I really am glad to hear you talking about the way you synthesized Ed Reports and Curate, our own kind of Massachusetts DESI sanctioned program, how you kind of used those as lenses to identify the places, the starting curriculums. I think that is just a really great way to have approached it. And I just was going to also mention, because I heard you say this when you brought some updates to a curriculum and a curriculum advisory committee meeting, just to make sure everyone understands that part of the launch or implementation phase is also unique to Milton, and that whatever is selected will be translated into French, so that French immersion students are accessing the new math curriculum as well. So just for anyone listening, that was a question that had come up, and that will be, that will be good. So thanks again.
And thank you, Dr. Carol. I really do appreciate that, and you're right to draw attention to the unique need that we have in Milton. The first, among the first requests that I had to make when I reached out to the publishers was to be sure that we would be able to translate the first and second grade materials into French since math instruction and the French immersion program is delivered in French entirely. And so if that had not been granted from any of the programs that I spoke of, they would no longer be on our list. So that's an important point to highlight. I thank you for that.
Member Rosemarin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Selig, for this great presentation. And thanks also to your team. You've got quite a wonderful list of people that are involved in this study, and I appreciate their working through this challenging year to get us to this point, and look forward to seeing this roll out. Dr. Carol addressed some of the questions that I had already, but I had one more around what are we thinking in terms of the implementation rollout? Would this be all grades K to five at once? Would it be a couple grades at a time? How are we going about that?
Thank you, Member Rosemarin, for that question. I think there's urgency, and I think that you could make an argument either way. We've been proceeding with the intent to have a new curriculum in place across K-5 next fall. You know, there is a lot, there is an argument to be made where you phase it into the earlier grades and you acclimate students to the new curriculum who are younger, and then sort of work it up into the upper elementary, maybe in year two. You know, I think the, the reality. You know, I think the, the reality of the situation is such that that would be to the detriment of our upper elementary students not to benefit from a new, more rigorous and better aligned curriculum right away. But your question allows me to say something that I think is, is important to note, which is that the transition initially will be a little bit rocky. You know, we're talking about teachers going from a curriculum that they're very familiar with, very comfortable with, to one that they're not. We're talking about students who are going from something familiar to something unfamiliar. And we're also, you know, if it wasn't, if it wasn't going to be something notably better, it wouldn't be worth it. And so with that too, will, will, will come some rockiness initially. So that professional development plan sustain is critical to the success. And, you know, I think while there will be those bumps in the road early on, I, I think they're inevitable and I think that they're worth, you know, I don't think they should deter us from doing what is right or delaying what is right. So I probably gave you more than you bargained for there, but, but both rollouts have merit. I think under our circumstances, we should push forward with a new math curriculum for all elementary grades this fall.
That, that, that sounds, that sounds great. I would, would recommend the same based on everything you told us about how outdated our current curriculum is and we want to do the best by our students. And I know with our English Language Arts curriculum that we invested in and brought everybody on board all at once. It was, it was a little bumpy in the beginning, but everybody got on at once and everyone got going with it and didn't have to wait your turn. So thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Member Ross Steady. And Assistant Superintendent Sheen, do you have your hand up? Or, okay, yeah. All right, Member Ross Steady.
And once again, thanks for taking the time to implement such a rigorous plan and inspiring many teachers to participate. I had the benefit as part of the Curriculum Instruction Advisory Group to hear part of this presentation earlier in, just in response to Member Rosemary's comment about the implementation in the fall. The good thing is we do have precedent of schools who have done well with the first year implementation. And I shared that with Brian during that meeting. Because while it might be bumpy, we do have a track record of a school who's been able to do it successfully. And now that we have common planning time system-wide, it'll make it much easier for our teachers to plan together prior to a lesson being introduced so they can learn from one another and probably be much more prepared to implement the new curriculum than they would have been several years ago. So kudos to the group for A, getting common planning time and B, just being thoughtful about trying to provide our students with rigor as soon as possible. My last comment has to do with what you saw in ed reports and the fact that our current math curriculum was in the column of not meeting in terms of being rigorous. So it is very important that we use this opportunity to make sure that every elementary school student has the access to the curriculum as soon as possible because our data has shown the gaps in math. A lot of it due to COVID, but the only way we're going to be able to make it up is with a more rigorous curriculum. I don't think everyday math will be able to close those gaps as fast as we would like. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Chair Abahar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Selig, for the presentation tonight. I'll just share with everyone that when they rolled everyday math out, they did it backwards. So they started with the fifth grade, then the fourth grade, then the third grade, then the second. It was quite a time as a parent. I actually purchased one of the books to try to understand everyday math because lattice multiplication made no sense to me as a parent. And trying to help my children understand.
I apologize to you on behalf of our entire math education community who subjected you to that.
That's totally fine. I mean visually, you know, I'm not, I'm not visual that way, so I have trauma still. I'm not, I use that word. I shouldn't use it that way. I was so happy when they went to the middle school and they just did regular things. But anyway, I'm looking forward to the new curriculum. I just had a really quick question. So I don't know how long some of these curriculums have been out. But like, how are you aligning the curriculum that you choose with the work that you're doing at the middle school? And then thinking about outcomes. I don't know how long some districts have been using the curriculum. But that, so if you use it in a curriculum, let's say in a district for five years, and then what does those outcomes look for students when they get to middle and high school? In terms of progress and advancement and just making sure there's some sort of connection to what we're doing in the middle and then up to the high school. Just curious.
Such a good question. And I, I think there are a number of these publishers that have tried to appeal to a desire for consistency and offer their program K to 12. The flaw in that is that they're not often of the same equal quality and appropriateness at the elementary level as they are at the high school level. So my philosophy on this is that we should get the best thing that we can for the age level students that we have, accepting that that means that there's going to, there won't be one curriculum across K-12. The version of the middle school curriculum, which I've shared a little bit with this committee last year when we were talking about the conversation around acceleration, isn't even at this point offered at either the elementary or the high school level. But we still feel very confident in its appropriateness for our students at Pierce in terms of how well it aligns to standards, the pedagogical opportunities it provides to teachers, the differentiation opportunities that it provides. And so because we feel, I, I guess my, the best way I can answer that is if we feel at every grade level we have a curriculum in place that is accessible to students with different entry points and aligns faithfully to standards, then we'll be able to measure the desirable outcomes, even if it looks different or comes on a different platform or, or the, you know, the, the, the name on the front cover is different.
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't think it's, it's, the, the needs are so different from elementary to middle to high. I'm just thinking like you'd be, it'd be curious to think about from like a research perspective, like how, like the skills you're building, they translate into the skills you need in middle and high school for that real mathematical.
Well, that's definitely the way the standards are intended to be written. So there's certainly this coherence across grade levels and, you know, it's interesting to, this question is leading me to thinking too far ahead about the potential building project and what that might mean in terms of curriculum. And, you know, I, I wouldn't say that it's necessarily the case that the same curriculum and instructional materials that are best suited for kindergartners are also best suited for fifth graders. The way that we structure buildings is not necessarily the way we should make decisions around curriculum. I think fifth grade standards and student learning experiences should look a lot more closely between fifth and sixth grade or fourth and sixth grade than between kindergarten and fourth grade, for example.
No, that's an excellent, so I'm glad to hear you say that because I 100% agree with you that, that, the way that math looks in the younger, younger early and very different and should be when it gets to even fifth grade. So thanks for all your work and thought on that. I really, really appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for your time and thank you for the update, Brian.
Absolutely. Thank you, James.
Thank you. So very quickly before I just highlight a few things that are coming up in this very busy month of March. I first want to start off my comments by thanking all of the families, students and the faculty and staff for their work over the vacation and transition back. We were pleasantly pleased to see all of our students returning to schools. We only had, as of Monday, we only had two students that were impacted by COVID-19, even though it's only two, that's, that's still a concern. But we're happy that it was, we're moving in the right direction. And out of all of our faculties and staff in the Milton Public Schools, we only had two COVID-related situations, one positive and one symptomatic, but since returned to school. Last week, for many of our families, the Milton Public Schools again partnered up with Menet Community Health Center and tried to advertise a vaccination clinic ahead of our mobile vaccination clinic. That was on Thursday of last week, the 24th. 160 folks that attended that vaccination clinic and about a third of them were from the town of Milton. So again, making the vaccine available for the folks worked in their favor. The second thing, the 26th, I want to give a shout out to Kim Coughlin and Charlene Roach. Excuse me, Kim Coughlin and Charlene Roach in the administrative office. Sorry about that, folks. That was not me. They, they came in on Saturday, the 26th from 9/11 and handed out at home rapid antigen tests for any folks in the Milton Public Schools or families that wanted to grab one to test on Sunday. They did that. And then finally, we're just looking forward to move forward. We're, we're preparing for the transition of mask optional. But when I say that we're looking for that transition, I do want to acknowledge that we still know that there's some students and families that are out there that may have a little bit of concern about that transition and want to make sure that we support you. I know that the principals have been meeting with their faculty and staff. We had a screening committee meeting last night. I shared it with folks in that screening committee. I shared it with all of the PTO presidents on Monday at 12 o'clock. We want to make sure that every student, faculty and staff who comes in the building and if they feel like they feel a need to continue wearing a mask, we want them to do so and do so comfortably and without any backlash from anyone. And that goes to our faculty and staff as well. So we're looking forward to that. What I do want to, I started out by saying I thank the parents. I thank them for their patience, their understanding and cooperation because all of our students showed up for the most part, nothing different than any other day during this pandemic, wearing masks and following protocol. The one thing I will say over the vacation, I believe it was Saturday, the 26th, the CDC changed their guidance about lifting the federal order of mask on bus. I'm asking for parents and students to continue to wear your mask on bus all, all throughout this week. And then on Monday, it's mask optional. With masks being optional, I will encourage people to have their kids come in with a mask just in case there's a scenario or situation that they might feel uncomfortable about during the day, they have access to the mask. If they forget and need one, we have a surplus of masks to provide them. One highlight in all of this is still a recommendation of DPH. Mask optional will be on buses. We say the buses are the schools on wheels and in the building. But in a health department, the health rooms at each of the building, masks are still required when you walk into those facilities. So I do want to make sure people know that. And if students come without a mask, don't worry, our nurse and staff have that mask available so they can provide those when they're in the nursing office. Because again, we could have students who come in or throughout the day present with symptoms and we want to make sure anyone in that office that goes in for their daily medication, asthma pump, diabetic checks, whatever the case may be, people could do so and feel comfortable walking into those health offices. So again, we're looking forward, you will get an update from me either tomorrow or Friday as a standalone reminding you as families, all of the mitigating factors. I think focus on this, we emphasize with our principals and then our staff to make sure all of the air purifiers remain on throughout the course of the day while our students in the building and windows will be cracked open. And again, if someone, if something like that happens and people are not aware, we just want to make sure that you reach out to your building principal or a staff member in your school. So again, we have our vaccination clinics coming up on Monday. This is coming Saturday. That will be at Milton High School. And then on the 26th, it will be at the Pierce Middle School. And they range from nine, I believe there's nine to three, but that'll be in the blog again. And I hope anyone who feels the need to get first, second, or possible booster shot, they could do so on any of those days. Member Ross Steady?
I received a question about how mask optional works at lunch for students who have comorbidities or compromised. What plans are in place to make those students feel more comfortable or safe in those settings?
I, I, I think if a student is, decides to wear a mask, they can continue to wear masks, obviously while eating and drinking, they can remove the mask. It's very tight in some of our cafeterias as it is already. We do our best to try to socially distance, but there's no socially, social distance guidance and it depends on the school, the lunch period. But we're doing our best to try to keep everybody safe. So there's really nothing different during the lunch, other than the fact students deciding to either go mask optional or not. There's really not that much of a difference during lunch. Lunch was the only time during the school day, unless it was a mass break outside, that students were maskless. But those who choose not to wear a mask will remain maskless. There's no, there's no stipulations about a silent lunch. I want to make that clear. We're not minimizing it. Obviously, most of our students, once seated, is seated. There's not a lot of going back and forth to various tables, especially at the elementary level. But at the middle, in the high school level, you might see students move from table to table depending on whether it is a snack or getting up and talking. We're not, we're not stifling that, but I think that I, I think the students who, I think anybody with any concerns or medical concerns, they should reach out to their building nurse and have that conversation directly with their school, the school nurse. Any other questions about that? Well, thank you very much. And then the last couple of quick updates, I want to let folks know. Our grade, grade one information night is going to take place next Thursday, the 9th at 6:30, ready to go. It's a busy night. We just completed our pre-registration for kindergarten. I'm pleased to say as of this morning, excuse me, as of yesterday, 26 students have already pre-registered for kindergarten. That is slightly down from 329 last year at this time, but we always get those registrations to trickle in. So we're looking forward to that. And as of yesterday, I believe it was 142 preschoolers that are pre-registered with 76 who still have to complete their registration form. So our numbers are growing in the Milton Public Schools and we're going to continue to do that. And I say to anyone that has any concerns about that, you could always reach out to Central Office or to whatever schools that have the pre-K program in particular, that would be Cunningham or the Tucker. But we're looking forward and we're excited about that. The other thing is coming up on the 17th of March, the parent teacher conferences. We are moving to in-person during parent teacher conferences, but we will provide opportunities for any family or any parents or guardians that may have a concern about coming in the building. Either week before, week after conferences, they could reach out to the individual teachers and maybe set something up to be done virtually. But on the 17th, all of our parent teacher conferences will be in-person. And keep in mind, it's unlike the conferences in the fall, there's no night conferences. It's pretty early afternoon. So when it becomes available to sign up or connect to set up a parent teacher conference, we encourage you to do so as soon as possible because the limited number of slots on that evening, they fill up pretty quickly. And then finally, I want to share all of our 10th graders. Families were sent home a letter today on the 22nd and 23rd. They will participate. All of our sophomores will participate in the ELA MCAS. That, that happens on the 22nd and 23rd. The high school held assemblies today, particularly with the sophomores to give them an update to make sure that they're aware of this. And I would encourage parents and guardians to check their inbox for those letters so you know, you to know what's going on in regards to the MCAS. For Rosemary?
Yeah, just wanted to go back if I could to the parent teacher conferences being in person. So if, if parents prefer to do remote, is that, you said they would have to arrange that individually? Is that, is that what you were explaining? I, I guess the reason I'm asking is, is I remember very clearly the presentation from Tucker School and how the participation in parent teacher conferences was way higher than it had been before with the remote option. And, and I just don't want to lose that participation. participation if we are shifting and maybe missing some.
No, and I'm not sure if you heard me, member Rosemary, and you have a week before, week after that you could do that. But also they could call the teacher. In reality is you have a two and a half to three hour session right after school. And so if you have those conferences, you, if you have a class of 24, 25, you may not have enough time to get all of your students or all of the parents that want to come in. And that's why as part of the teacher contract, they could provide conferences, you know, before and after that designated evening. But absolutely without a doubt, virtual conference options are available for anyone. What I am saying is that they might have to speak to the individual teacher so they could send out an individual. It's unlike us being on this meeting right now when you send out one link. Because you don't want multiple different families on one particular link. So they would have to coordinate with the individual teachers to set up those individual conference times virtually.
I mean, thank you.
Member Carol.
Yeah, I think, I think that you just addressed my question. My question was very similar to your question, member Rosemary. And so I guess what I'm understanding is if parents or guardians want a virtual conference, it just will not take place during that designated afternoon window of time. Whereas previously, the conference window included the the virtual links.
They could do it on that night as well because most conferences, the individual conferences where they don't have it. So they could do it, but they would have to speak specifically to that teacher to set up the link.
Got it.
All the time that they want. But I also want to remind people because it is, sorry, there is a limited amount of time on the afternoon. We don't have this second session in the evening on these, in the March conferences. So they still have, they don't have to rush to do it on that night. They can reach out to the teacher and maybe set something up before or after. There's a two-week window in which conference could be held. But the ninth conference, if folks want to come in in person and have that dialogue, they can. And it's mask optional on that evening for those who want to come in as well.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying that. I just shared your question, Ada, because I think that this is an example of the kind of thing that will be good to carry forward beyond COVID is the opportunity for flexibility for, you know, people to zoom into a short check-in with teachers. So thank you for that.
Member Ross Denny.
I'm, I'm trust that, I remember last time we had this conversation, you explained that the leadership team talked about the open house being in person, but the parent meetings would be in a different format. So I appreciate the fact that they, that there are options. If anything, it might be worth considering sharing with the leadership team that the default might be online. And the in-person might be the one that's scheduled for for working families and I'm a working mom. To leave in the middle of the workday for a 10-minute meeting can be challenging. But getting on Zoom, the way that the high school set it up, there was a scheduler, I don't remember what the tool was, but they were back to back. And when I was invited to join the meeting, there was no competition for time in terms of links. So I'm not sure what the tool they used, but I did find it helpful. But I would love to have the leadership team reconsider that the default actually be online. It would just make it so much easier for families to participate. And then if they want to do the scheduling, as you mentioned, in the other format in person, that that's, you know, the secondary option. But thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other question? So a lot of this information will be in the update in tomorrow's blog with a lot of the dates. It is a very busy month of March. And before we blink, we're going to be sitting upon April vacation. So we're asking folks to really take the opportunity, for those who are listening, the blog, and we're trying to give some individual updates, but also pay attention to your individual principal communications that goes out, that go out weekly, because it's, it's going to be a lot. And we just want to make sure people do not miss anything. And we're just, we're really excited. And again, we're really excited to return to mask optional. But I say that with all due respect for anyone else who has concerns about the mask. And if there's any level of discomfort or concern, and a few people have already emailed me about that to get clarification. I ask people to really reach out to the individual school principal. And if you don't get the answer there, then you can reach out to central office. But we want to make sure, one of the things I did say is I want folks to be prepared. If, whether it's elementary, middle or high, if someone asks a child, are you still wearing a mask? That doesn't always constitutes bullying. What I want, because some students are just naturally curious. So they might say, hey, you're wearing a mask. You know, we don't have to wear a mask anymore. Student could simply reply, I, it is my choice. I want to wear a mask. I don't want students to feel compelled that they have to recite to their peers or anyone else their medical history or their family preference. However, if the questions come from the same person over and over, that is a different story. If they're too persistent or pressuring people, we do not want that to happen. So I want to make that clear. We're trying to articulate that in the communication that we send home. Everyone has a right to come to a Milton Public Schools to feel comfortable regardless of they're wearing a mask or not. So I I appreciate you guys supporting me this opportunity and I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Abahad.
Thank you, Superintendent Jett. Yes, I, I, I 100% agree with everything that you just said. And I, I hope that we will be a mask-friendly school environment and supporting everyone as we make this transition into the next phase of the pandemic, endemic and the future. And I'm, I'm confident that we have the community that can do that. So I look forward to good reports. And I know that students, I hope every student has a safe, trusted adult in the building that they can go to if they're worried or concerned, or just someone to check in during these, during this transition time, right? Life is in transitions and they can often be a little challenging. So thank you for all your work and the leadership team and the nurses and everyone on that, on this new, on this new change. All right. The next part of our meeting is citizen speak. If you would like to address the committee, raise your hand and you will be moved up to be able to speak. Citizen speak, it's a lot of 15 minutes at our meeting. I ask you to keep your comments, comments related to our policies or anything on the agenda and not to speak directly about a person in the town. So that'll open up citizen speak.
If anyone wishes to speak, if you could just raise your hand and we will elevate you. But at this point, Chair Abahad, I do not see any hands raised. If you want to give it a couple of more seconds, we could do so.
We'll do that, yeah.
Chair Abahad, at this time, I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, Superintendent Jett. Thank you for always taking on that, that, that task at the meeting. If you have any concerns after the meeting or anything that rises to a level that you have a question, you can always email us. We'll do our best to get back to you as soon as we can. All right, great. The next item on our agenda is the chair's report. We're going to do a quick conversation about our mid-cycle review of the district and the superintendent. If you recall, the last time I gave a brief overview of the process. And in a superintendent's or anyone's first year as a professional, in a new professional position in a district, you usually have a mid-year formative assessment or, and then or a summative evaluation at the end of that first year. So I sent you all the, and I showed last time at the meeting, some of the things to consider. And I asked you all to think about some of the things that were not represented in our meetings that we've had so far, in presentations that we received so far. And then to let, to let us know as a committee and superintendent Jett know, what are some of the other items you'd like some information on for us to use to then be able to submit a formative assessment? So do any of the school committee members want to share some of their thoughts about any additional information that they would like to have from the administration about where we are as a district currently in relation to the goals? Yes. Member Ross Denny.
It is literally the goal. So I know that both the school committee and the superintendent have goals in any way that we can almost treat it as like a progress update, like where are we relative to those goals would be helpful. We've also talked about supervision and evaluation of the, especially the central office staff and some sort of data as to how frequently the teaching staff have been receiving feedback or part of a coaching cycle. And community engagement, I also think would be very important to engage in terms of whether it's both the school committee and or the superintendent are engaging stakeholder groups in a meaningful way.
Thank you, Member Ross Denny. Oh, Dr. Carol.
Just to add to what Member Ross Denny just said, one thing I noticed in the rubric that I also think we could use some artifacts on is the recruitment, hiring, retention piece. That's not something I feel like I have a lot of information on, so I'm not sure what that might consist of, but that was a question that I had. And then another question was just, I know that we've had, so I guess this may connect to the first point you raised, Member Ross Denny, about how both the superintendent and we as a school committee are tracking progress toward the goals that we set in this sort of mid-year timeframe. So a question is, we, we did receive as at school committee meetings, the reports, and I'm specifically thinking about the school quality review. But I am wondering whether it would be helpful to identify kind of what follow-up has already occurred sort of in response to those reports in order to identify sort of where we're, I don't, where we're at, I guess, in responding. I, on that piece, I know that the, obviously, the fact of having our Director of Educational Equity position open at the moment is like a factor. But I also know that there are some parts of that work that the superintendent sort of holds responsibility for. So that's just a question that I had, not, I don't have like a clear sense of what it should look like. But yeah, I think those were the main things I was going to add. Member White.
I was gonna just ask a little bit about, about professional development. And certainly I know that professional development is often planned way in advance. And so it's, it's laid out for the next calendar year, next academic year. But I know that with all of the demands on the teaching staff and professional staff with cultural competency, with diversity, with social emotional learning, and then all the other academics that they have to address. I mean, certainly the discussion tonight with Brian about the new math curriculum and the professional developments to get teachers on board with that. You know, I'm, I'm sort of curious about how you are planning professional development, given our limited resources and the time issues around, you know, when we're allowed to do professional development with the schedule. I just wondered if some of that could be discussed around, you know, how that's going and, and how you plan for that.
All right, wonderful. Does anyone else have anything? I can send you President Jett a quick email and I'll copy all of you, of course, on it, which is some of the questions that you mentioned tonight. And then, yes, Dr. Carol.
So on the agenda, it says mid-cycle review of district slash superintendent. So if my question is something that I should save for the end of the meeting when we discuss next agenda items, I can do that. I guess my question is, since this is my first year, kind of at this point in the year, is there a timeframe or a process where we would do a mid-year check-in on the goals that we set for the school committee?
That would be a really good thing to do. They suggest doing that. We have never done that. I think we should do that. And we can add that if you want to. Or that can be part of the district. We can, we should look at our goals and they actually, the MASDC has a document for you, for us to use as a committee to assess and look at where we're at and then to report out. I think that would be a really, really fruitful task on our part and would align nicely with, with the work of the superintendent. Because I know there are things that are goals that we had hoped to do that we haven't had a chance to do yet. And I think that we should speak to that and then set a plan for ourselves, what we should do to meet those goals. So that's, that's a great idea. I know that I don't want to overwhelm people with, with too much things to think about. If we could think about just working on this first formative assessment and also then perhaps we can do, we can have one not at the March meeting, but at the
The first April meeting? Sure. That would still leave, I mean, I know I'm thinking about some things that I would like to still be able to put in place before the year is out. I do feel like that first week of April is still, is still okay to talk about that and put things into place following that. So I wouldn't want it to go later than that, but I
No, and I'm happy to add it. We can, you can think about it all amongst yourselves and you can certainly add it to think about at the 16th.
No, I think you're right. It's good. But also for Superintendent Jett to know that, you know, we are having this conversation about, you know, his mid-year evaluation, because that's the role of the school committee is to conduct that as part of supervising the superintendent. But we are also, you know, I think that's actually great if benefit is the first time we're doing that as a school committee to check in on our own goals and track our own progress and, you know, acknowledge where we are not necessarily hitting all of our goals either. And then we can learn from that the same way we would hope any superintendent is learning from a mid-year check-in too. Thanks.
Yeah. And I think it's super helpful, you know, just as someone who does this as part of their daily work, it's so helpful to me when I work with others to sit and talk how things are going and get their perspective and then also to get feedback from them about how, as a, as a, as a person who works with them, how I can be more helpful. So I really, I find this process that is outlined, that's laid out, pretty helpful. So I think those are all great ideas. So wonderful. All right, great. Well, thank you all for the time and energy that you're putting all into this. And yeah, wonderful. That's all I have to say tonight. I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Carol, for policy.
Sure, thank you. So I, I will, the update, the report from Policy Subcommittee is that this past Monday, we had the next conversation about the calendar policy IC, which is something we had begun discussing in January. And we have a redlined version of that to bring to you all for a first reading of this policy tonight. I can share my screen to let us kind of walk through the proposed changes and see what input you all have. Just to acknowledge that, you know, I think in our most recent conversation, am I, yes, I am able to share my screen. In our most recent conversation, we really focused on how, you know, a, a large part of the work of revising this policy, which is long overdue for an update, involves bringing us into compliance with us date statute. Can, do you all see the calendar policy? Okay.
Yes.
I will just walk us through the changes that the Policy Subcommittee approved. I do have one sort of point or I guess lingering question that I have out of our conversation. And then we can just open it up and see what feedback you all have. Okay, so here you just can see that we're updating the name of our union is now the Milton Educators Association. This was out of date. These points are still the same, the same number of days and hours with a slight distinction between elementary of 900 hours versus secondary for 990 hours. But otherwise, But otherwise, nothing has really changed in how we define the requirements for time. Those standards set forward by the state are still the same. This language here is what we have added into the policy. And this is to reflect the conversation that we had informed by our community member, Dr. Mona Abuzana, who shared her, you know, she spoke at a full school committee meeting and followed up by joining our Policy Subcommittee meeting in January. We have ended up adding in this language, which is the citation below is, this is a memo from Commissioner O'Reilly that quotes the actual statute, which you see cited here. And the important addition and update to our policy is just making clear that we will, in compliance with state and federal law, make reasonable accommodations to the religious needs of students and employees as they observe holy days for their religion. And this section provides the sort of detail of what the, what that accommodation consists of. One thing I wanted to flag here is that I appreciated Superintendent Jet had noted the kind of use of pronouns here, and as far as male pronouns and use of his and he, on whether we would want to, being joined by Julia. Okay, sorry, everybody.
She's an honorary school committee.
Can you please, you need to go to bed. This always happens. My husband puts them to bed and goes downstairs and thinks it's fine, and then she comes in here. Okay.
He knows.
You really need to leave.
I gotta stop him charging the
Okay. So the, the the question, I think, is whether we would potentially like amend the quoted language here to reflect, like, gender-neutral pronouns. That's something that I'm wondering if we want to discuss. This part of the language that we added in was something we discussed and adapted on Monday. But these are just additional points that kind of explain implementation of that statute language included above. And so you can see, that should be a lowercase i, that these are three points that we arrived at as a Subcommittee for kind of the policy around what Milton Public Schools will do to provide those accommodations. And we simply added guardians and clarified that we're talking about professional development days here, and those were the changes that we proposed. So at this point, I think we shall make a motion to discuss this proposed revisions to policy IC. If there's a second to that motion, and then we can open the discussion.
Second.
Thanks. Okay, Member White?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that.
Oh, okay, no problem. So any questions or comments or changes? I'm Chair Everhart.
No, I just want to thank you, I thank the Policy Subcommittee for this work. And also, I think the idea of gender-neutral pronouns, we should do that.
Yeah.
That's, that's great. Thank you, Lieutenant Jet and Sub-Policy Subcommittee. I think that's, it makes, it aligns our policies with all of our other policies.
So that would, just, just following on that point, as if you look at my screen, like, that would be something like, because I'm amending a quoted text here, it would be something like that?
I think so. I know, yes, I think so. We can ask some Dr. Craighead, she has her hand up. Yes, okay. She's the English, but also the president, so I think that'd be the way we would do it. And I'm also just thinking, I know Dr. Craighead has her hand up, that we have policies that we put, that we that we every year say that this policy should be shared with parents and guardians at the beginning of a school year. So I think this would be one of those policies that would be important to make parents and guardians aware of, so that they understand how we think about holidays in the district, and then have it as part of those policies so that parents are aware, and guardians, at the beginning of the school year.
I agree with that. Dr. Craighead?
Yeah, my point has already been made. I was just going to say that I adamantly would be in favor of making the changes that you're making right now, Dr. Carol. And I'm actually disappointed that this is the way that the Mass General Law reads, so. Or that this is the memo from, are these the words of the Commissioner? Or the words from the Mass General Law?
Probably the law.
Okay. Shame. Okay, thank you. And I just want to say, we had a really, really good discussion about, and a really specific discussion about all of this added language, and I think we came up with a good, with some good changes.
Superintendent Jet, I really want to thank you for your input into the discussions, because you you really shed light for us on how to, you know, update this policy in an inclusive way that, you know, is also sort of feasible to implement. And our goal in revising the policy was really to bring it, this is classic, bring it into alignment with the state law, but also to like have it properly reflect the practice that's in place already in Milton Public Schools. And, you know, in particular, really thoughtful practices that have been in place around accommodating students who are observing Jewish holidays, to make sure that we're intentionally sort of extending those accommodations to students who may be celebrating any and all additional holidays, including the Muslim holidays that Dr. Abuzana was sort of helping us learn about. So, you know, you can see the example here that had been shared with us as far as when a student might benefit from accommodations. So anyway, I appreciate your really thoughtful engagement with this whole process, Superintendent Jet. Here comes my husband. Are there any other? Are there any other, I think that's the worst I've had so far. Are there any other comments?
I just wanted to add one thing. Since this is a first reading, we all just marinate on it, correct? And then come back to, okay, great.
So I've made the changes that we just talked about. If there are no additional proposed changes, then we will just have this on our agenda in two weeks to take a vote on approving the policy. And it, yeah, will be updated, and that will be great. Thank you so much, everybody. That concludes the policy report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Carol, Dr. Craighead, Member Rose Maron, for your work on policy, and Superintendent Jet, and Dr. Jantshin, Amy Dexter. All right, thank you. Policy is finished, and finance is up next. Finance Subcommittee?
Okay, we had our most recent finance meeting yesterday. It was, I don't think it was a record for the shortest meeting ever, but it was very brief. And on the agenda were the FY23 budget and ARPA. There's really no update with either of those. We're sort of in the process of getting ready to meet jointly with the Finance Subcommittee of the Select Board and our Finance Subcommittee to look at items in the rollover budget that are eligible for ARPA, and to, excuse me, discuss some of our budgetary requests. We're also in the process of setting up meetings with the Warrant Committee's School Subcommittee to meet with us and answer some of their questions as well. We went over, we took a look at the recommendation that was made by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, of which I'm also a member, for the capital budget for FY23, and what the schools, if approved, what the schools would get in that capital budget. Then the big thing that happened in that meeting is that I, well, I revealed to everybody that I am stepping down as Chair of Finance, and we had a vote on new chair, and the winner, I think winner is the right word, the winner is Member White, who has graciously agreed to take over as Chair. And we also voted her in as the signatory for the vendor warrants with Member Ross Denny volunteering to be the backup or secondary signer, in case Member White is unable to sign. It's going to feel strange not to give the finance reports and make motions on the vendor warrants after five years of chairing Finance, and after six years of serving on Finance. But, but I know that finance is in the capable hands of Betty White, so thank you, Betty, for stepping up. And the last thing that I have to do is to aforementioned vendor warrant. I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number 36 payable on March 3, 2022, in the amount of $209,177.25. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. This is a roll call vote. Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Chair Everhart?
Yes.
And me, it's a yes, so that's 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Craighead, for all your years on Finance Subcommittee. Oh, I think Member Rose Maron has something to say.
I just wanted to do the same, was to thank Dr. Craighead for her years of service, leading us through the Finance Annual Budget Building and advocacy and coordination with the Select Board and the Warrant Committee, and helping us to understand all the ins and outs of the budget for all the years that I've been on school committee. And I just want to express my appreciation for your leadership, so thank you.
Same.
Same.
Yeah, this is same, when you work with little kids, when you go like this, it means, or me, too, in sign language. All right, thank you, Finance Subcommittee. We know there's lots more to come in that department. Okay, so are we not having Curriculum and Facilities School Building Committee report from Member Rose Maron?
Oh, yeah. I had it right in front of me. Hold on one sec. There it is. I was just looking for the dates. The School Building Committee is doing two public forums, the first of which will be tomorrow evening, March 3, at 7:30, and then another one, March 10, at 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon. And this will be for families and community members. An invitation for, these forums have been sent out to the whole school community, and anyone who would be interested in participating is welcome. And I'll have an opportunity to learn about what the School Building Committee has been doing, and about the enrollment growth that we've seen over the years, and the efforts that we've taken, and steps we've taken to address those will be presented. So we welcome people, and we will be doing more of those between now and town meeting, as we have learned, actually, School Building Committee is presenting to the Warrant Committee on Monday, we just found out this past week, about articles that will be going to the annual town meeting in May around, there are two different articles that relate to the same the transfer and relabeling of some parcels of land that were not labeled properly back in 2002, and then the proposed land swap for the parcel of land that we hope to acquire for the purposes of building a new school building. So we'll be moving that forward to the Warrant Committee, and then there will be quite a number of public forums and information sessions available for people to learn more about that, and to ask questions, and hopefully leading to a successful vote at town meeting in May.
Member Rose Maron, I have a question regarding the responsibility of this school committee. Will you and the School Building Committee be reporting out to the school committee and asking us to make a decision about the type of building? I mean, the configuration of the building?
Configuration, yes, yes. And we will, we plan to come back, I think we talked about March 16, yeah.
Yes, we did, which is our next meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah, next meeting.
So one of the questions that I have then is, when you have these forums on the second, oh, I apologize, the third, which is tomorrow, and then the 10th, which is next week, right, next week? Will there be opportunities, so will you be discussing, like, configuration with the community? Are you just, or will there be opportunities for them to ask questions or weigh in about any of that?
Yes. Okay. Yes, to both of those, to all of those. We will be discussing that. We will be presenting that there are two options being considered right now, but that the decision for which option we'll go with is up to the school committee. We did the same presentation with the Milton Public Schools staff and faculty before vacation, and went through the different possibilities and the pros and cons of these options, and what research tells us. And then people had the opportunity to ask questions, and at the end of the session, we did a quick poll of participants, and we will be doing the same at the forums tomorrow and next week. And then when we come back on March 16, we'll bring the results of those polls, and we'll provide the same information to school committee and be able to have a discussion amongst ourselves. And hopefully come to a decision. If not on March 16, if we're not ready to make a decision at that meeting, then we could move a decision to the following meeting, which would be the first meeting in April. So thanks for asking.
Does anybody want to ask any questions about that? Okay. I forgot about, you mentioned to me about the polls, so. I forgot about, you mentioned to me about the poll, so I forgot. I just want to make, I don't, I don't know ultimately the decision will rest with the School Committee and the administration, obviously taking the recommendations of the administration and the School Committee. But I recognize that, um, you know, uh, community members may have feelings or thoughts, or they may have experience working in a school district or, um, that, that is a different configuration, um, than the ones we have. And when we, configuration, we should remind people that we talked about having that five just, uh, middle school, new other middle school model, et cetera. So, you know, it's just so they're aware of the opportunity for them to share some of that, um, information is, is available to them because obviously experience is helpful.
Right, right. And, and in the poll, um, we offered the options of either the elementary school or the, um, the, uh, new middle school or other. And if people selected other, we asked them to email us with their recommendation, their suggestion of what that other might be. And we've heard from some people of, of some of the other possibilities that were suggested. And there are things that we've considered and, um, decided, um, they weren't for, for Milton. Um, but we'll, we'll be able to bring all of that to the School Committee at, at our presentation and, um, at our next meeting.
Thank you, Members Rose Maron. That's terrific. Wonderful. Okay. All right, Health and Wellness, you're up.
Okay. Um, good. Okay. Well, Health and Wellness met on February 18th. And, um, we had the wellness coach that Jackie got a grant for, um, come in and meet with us and review our self-assessments on our, um, wellness policies. And, um, she made some recommendations, but overall, she was recommending that we, like, increase our language into our policies. Because she says, we're doing a lot of the things, but she wants us to like, um, write, write it into our policies. And actually, we could actually do it as an addendum so that we don't make the policy so, um, you know, lengthy. We could do an addendum in the back. She's, um, so anyway, all of the recommendations she made, Jackie and Natalia Perez are going to, um, put those into a format, send it back to our subcommittees. And Kristana is coming back to our next meeting just to review things one more time. And then that policy is going to be coming in front of, um, Policy and then the School Committee for a, uh, vote and a review. Um, so hopefully that will happen in April. And that's it. Our next meeting is, um, I don't know, I don't have the date in front of me, but it's sometime in March, the end of March.
Does anyone have any questions for Member White? I know it's a lot of work to redo that policy when eight and, when we only, we did it like maybe six years ago.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's gonna really look good. I mean,
It's, it's a lot of work. Yeah.
They're working really hard and the subcommittees have been very helpful. And the thing, the only thing about it's hard with this committee is that it's a huge committee. It's like 20 members on it. And the attendance is, is, I'm not saying sporadic, but a lot of times people that you're hoping are going to be there to report on certain things are not there because of other commitments. So a lot of times it's a little hard to get everything coordinated, but, um, you know, they've, Jackie and Natalia have been working really hard on it and they, um, have really taken over the responsibility of getting this done. And, um, hopefully, um, at the end of March when we meet, which I think is the 25th, we're gonna have everything ready to go and then we'll be sending it forward to Policy and then to the School Committee. And, uh, I wanted it done ASAP so we could have the vote.
Yeah, I think it's important to recognize that, like, the Health and Wellness Subcommittee, or, sorry, Advisory Committee serves two purposes. Obviously, the Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, but it's also part of the regulations that as Director of Food Services and the FDA, um, that Director Morgan, um, has to meet. So thank you for all the work on that. Appreciate it. All right. All right, our last item of business is to approve the minutes of our February 16th, 2022 meeting, which was our last meeting. You all received the minutes. Did you have a chance to look them over? Do you need more time or? Should I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 16th, 2022 meeting?
Second to that question.
There we go. Changes any? Does anyone like to make the minutes? Nothing? Uh, Member Rose Maron?
Um, I, I'm not able to find them right now, but I, I got the, um, the minutes and I had looked at them and had made some edits.
Do you want to keep them off? Do you want to approve them at the next meeting? It's totally fine by me.
Yeah, there were, there were just a few, a few changes that, that I thought were, um, were needed and, and unfortunately I can't put my finger on it right at this moment.
That's totally fine. Um, you can send them along to Maureen and then she can.
Yeah, I mean, she's, I thought she sent them in a, in a Google Doc. And so I thought that the changes that I made were just put in as, as a suggestion. Um, and wasn't quite sure what the process is for doing that because, um, I thought maybe those could be made before we got to this evening, but then I received, uh, the updated, uh, draft and those changes were not incorporated. So, I was a little confused about the process there.
It, it could very well be like, you know how sometimes with Google Docs, if you don't, like even though it says there are changes are saved, if the person that then is then looking at them or sharing them doesn't like update or accept or whatever, then sometimes it doesn't appear.
Yeah, yeah, it may, may just be a technical.
Yeah, it's in my, my, um, Dr. Carol.
Just builds on what you were asking about, Member Rose Maron, um, and it is a process question. Um, so if what we're talking about is like, you know, um, what I would consider type typos, uh, that type of thing, is that, like, are those things that, um, like, we avoid deliberating in, in a document?
You can send them to just Maureen, to, to, um, Ms. Kennedy.
Don't have to bring them.
Yeah, and then, right, and she, that's good. Right, if it's just a spelling or a type.
I kind of meant to ask that.
Exactly.
Before and I just never did, but thanks for.
As long as you, you just send it directly to her. Um, and she does send them to us and ask for, um, for any, um, feedback. So that would be something that would be a feedback that didn't require anyone.
Usually I feel like it's invited at the next meeting, so I've just not been sure what is, where is the line between like a technical suggestion versus.
It's a good question. I'm, I'm not sure that I 100% know that, but we can ask her.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, then we'll just approve them at the next meeting, which is fine. We're still within the timeframe, um, of approving them. We're doing great. Everyone, I think I want to thank Maureen Kennedy for, she gets the minutes out really quickly and really, we've never been like so lucky. We've really been moving them along, um, really nicely. So that's.
And that was a long meeting, so it was a lot, a lot there.
Um, so I don't have any old business. For our next meeting agenda items, I have, should I add curriculum instruction on, on that meeting? Okay. And what about, do you need a facilities one for the next time, Ada? Or it's just school building?
No, I don't think so. Just school building.
There was something else, oh, that the, the assessment. Um, what else was there? I feel like there's something else important that I'm forgetting. Oh, is there a Site Council Superintendent Jet? I need to find my, um, my, my calendar.
Oh, was that, was that when Susan Maselli was coming?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Susan Maselli on the 16th.
Yeah, the 16th, Susan. All right.
Right.
She does.
And then we were going to put the strategic plan on that first meeting in April.
Yep. Wonderful.
So you know what I wanted to ask is, can we have, um, updating, it doesn't have to be the next meeting. If it's too busy, we can wait till the following meeting. Um, you know, every, every spring town meeting, somebody gets up and asks about how many children have been removed from the Milton Public Schools who are found not to be living in Milton. And I just, we haven't really had a residency policy update in, I don't know, a couple of years, I don't think. I don't remember since COVID that we've had one. So I just wonder if we could have a residency policy update, um, prior to town meeting so that we can be ready for town meeting if that question were to come up. And it often does.
You, you mean just, just an update on the actual, because we did update the residency policy. You mean an update on just like removals and things?
Right. Just to get an idea of how things are going with that and, and if there's been any changes.
Yeah. So it's probably, those are probably, maybe those are good things to think about. Um, good idea about preparing for town meeting and thinking about questions that regularly come up, class size.
Yep.
Residency, cost per student, which, you know, got us a conversation at Warrant Committee, that kind of thing. Good things to think about. We can make that list. All right, great.
Yeah.
All right, just email me any other changes or additions, um, that you have, um, you know, and we can add them. Mary, is there, is there a Pierce Players event this weekend?
There is. Um, Sound of Music.
Apologize that. That's on Thursday, tomorrow night, Friday, Friday night, and then Saturday afternoon matinee, Pierce Players.
I was just wondering about that. I, I remember, I walked by Pierce the other day and I saw something hanging. And I was like, oh, is that, this is not this weekend? So I wish, and I don't want to say, what do you say, prick a leg, whatever you say, not lug, um, in the performance. And I, I think, I don't know how Pierce works for purchasing tickets. So, um, you might want, if you want to go, to reach out to the Pierce. I know the high school has an online process, but maybe they do have Pierce as well. I don't know. Does anyone?
Yeah, there's an online process. And this time it's not general admission, it's actual seat numbers.
Wow, exciting.
In there and try to get.
Yeah. Well, I hope it all goes really well. All right, well, there's.
Upping it three times.
You will? That's fantastic. You're replacing Chair Varela, former Chair Varela.
Man in Salzburg, apparently, in this, in this.
That's exciting. Well, then I hope that everything goes really well for all of the Pierce Players and the, um, all of the crew. And it's such a wonderful experience, so. All right, if there's nothing else, we can make a motion during the meeting.
You made a motion or do you want me to make the motion?
I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
This will be a roll call vote. Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes, it's before nine o'clock.
Member White?
Yes.
And Member Eberhard, yes. Thank you all for your hard work and I hope you have a great day tomorrow.
Good night.
See you guys soon. Bye.